Collier County, Board of County Commissioners, Community Redevelopment Agency Board, Airport Authority, Meeting Agenda. Board of County Commission Chambers, Collier County Government Center, 3299 10 Miami Trail East, 3rd Floor, Naples, Florida 34112. May 14th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. Commissioner William L. McDaniel Jr., District 5, Chair, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Burt Saunders, District 3, Vice Chair. Commissioner Donna Fiala, District 1, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Andy Solis, District 2. Commissioner Penny Taylor, District 4. Notice: All persons wishing to speak on agenda items must register prior to presentation of the agenda item to be addressed. All registered speakers will receive up to three minutes unless the time is adjusted by the Chairman. Request to petition the Board on subjects which are not on this agenda must be submitted in writing with explanation to the county manager at least 13 days prior to the date of the meeting and will be heard under public petitions. Public petitions are limited to the presenter with a maximum time of 10 minutes. Any person who decides to appeal a decision of this Board will need a record of the proceeding pertaining thereto and therefore may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Collier County Ordinance #2003-53 is amended by Ordinance 2004-05 and 2007-24, requires that all lobbyists shall before engaging in any lobbying activities, including but not limited to addressing the Board of County Commissioners, register with the Clerk to the Board at the Board Minutes and Records Department. If you are a person with a disability who needs any accommodation in order to participate in this proceeding, you are entitled, at no cost to you, the provision of certain assistance. Please contact the Collier County Facilities Management Division located at 3335 East 10 Miami Trail Suite 1, Naples, Florida 34112, or call 252-8380. Assisted listening devices for the hearing impaired are available in the Facilities Management Lunch recess is scheduled for 12 noon to 1:00 p.m. Item 1: Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. 1A: Pastor Eric R. Hausler of Christ the King Presbyterian Church and Chaplain, Naples Jail. Item 2: Agenda and Minutes. 2A: Approval of Today's Regular Consent and Summary Agenda as amended. Ex parte disclosure provided by commission members for consent agenda. 2B: April 9th, 2019, BCC Meeting Minutes. 2C: April 23rd, 2019, BCC Meeting Minutes. Item 3: Awards and Recognitions. 3D: Employee of the Month. 3D1: Presentation of the April 2019 Employee of the Month, David Street, Senior Instrumentation Electrical Technician, Public Utilities Department. Item 4: Proclamations. 4A: Proclamation Designating May 2019 as National Bike Month in Collier County, to be accepted by Michelle Avola, Executive Director Naples Pathways Coalition, and Eileen Conley Kessler, President and CEO of Community Foundation of Collier County. 4B: Proclamation Designating May 2019 as National Drug Court Month in Collier County, to be accepted by the Honorable Judge Janice Martin, Presiding Judge of the Collier County Drug Court, and participants of the Drug Court Team. 4C: Proclamation Designating May 19 through May 25, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Collier County, to be accepted by Tabitha Butcher, Chief, Collier County Emergency Medical Services, and members of the EMS Team. 4D: Proclamation Designating May 2019 as Internal Audit Awareness Month in Collier County, to be accepted by Representatives of the Office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller of Collier County, Robin Shelley and Gabriela Molina. 4E: Proclamation Designating May 2019 as Foster Care Month in Collier County, to be accepted by Nadira Saleem, Representing the Children's Network of Southwest Florida, Katie Vella, Representing Camelot Community Care, Anne Hughes and Vanessa Estrada, Representing Friends of Foster Children Forever, and Laura Lathkiss, Kim Weisberg and Lilian Mendez, Representing Youth Haven. Item 5: Presentations. 5A: Presentation of the Collier County Business of the Month from May 2019 to Naples Transportation and Tours, to be accepted by Randy Smith, CEO, and Tamir Ranko, COO. Also present is Bethany Sawyer, Representing the Greater Naples Chamber of Commerce. 5B: Presentation on Water Quality Issues Facing Southwest Florida from the Perspectives of the Micasuki Tribe of Indians and the Seminole Tribe of Florida, presented by Truman Gene Duncan Jr., Representing the Micasuki Tribe of Indians, and Amos Tiger, Representing the Seminole Tribe of Florida. 5C: Presentation by Dr. Lisa Krimsky, UFIFAS Regional Specialized Agent, Water Resources, on Current Research into Blue Green Algae and Red Tide. Joining Dr. Krimsky is Dr. Kelly Morgan, Director of UFIFAS Southwest Florida Research and Education Center. Item 6: Public Petitions. Item 7: Public Comments on General Topics Not on the Current or Future Agenda. Item 8: Board of Zoning Appeals. Item 9: Advertised Public Hearings. 9A: Recommendation to Approve an Ordinance Amending Ordinance #04-41 as amended, the Collier County Land Development Code, which includes the Comprehensive Land Regulations for the Unincorporated Area of Collier County, Florida, to allow communications towers as conditional use in the rural fringe mixed-use sending lands, and Conservation District, by providing for 1) Section 1 Recitals, Section 2 Findings of Fact, Section 3 Adoption of Amendments to the Land Development Code, more specifically amending the following: Chapter 2, Zoning Districts and Uses, including Section 2.01.03 Essential Services and Section 2.03.08 Rural Fringe Zoning Districts, and Section 2.03.09 Open Space District, Section 4 Conflict and Severability, Section 5 Inclusion in the Collier County Land Development Code, and Section 6 Effective Date. 9B: Recommendation to Approve an Ordinance Amending Ordinance #04-41 as amended, the Collier County Land Development Code, which includes the Comprehensive Land Regulations for the Unincorporated Area of Collier County, Florida, to create the Plantation Island Overlay, which will allow single-family detached dwelling units as permitted, uses in addition to the uses permitted by the underlying zoning district, by providing for Section 1 Recitals, Section 2 Findings of Fact, Section 3 Adoption of Amendments to the Land Development Code, more specifically amending the following: Chapter 2, Zoning Districts and Uses, including Section 2.03.07 Overlay Zoning Districts, Section 4 Conflict and Severability, Section 5 Inclusion in the Collier County Land Development Code, and Section 6 Effective Date. 9C: This item to be heard at 10:00 a.m. Recommendation to Approve Proposed Amendments to the Amokale Area Master Plan, for Transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, and other agencies for review and objections. Recommendations and comments, response. Item 10: Board of County Commissioners. 10A: Recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners review and approve the proposed two-year extension to the employment agreement for Mark Strain, Hearing Examiner. 10B: Recommendation to Approve a Resolution to the City of Everglades City, Florida declaring support for the remaining renaming of the Chocoloski Bridge to the John Joseph Brown Memorial Bridge, and provide for an effective date. Item 11: County Manager's Report. 11A: Recommendation to Authorize Budget Amendments in the Amount of $9,320,000 to fund the I-75 Collier Boulevard Utility Relocation Project, #70229. 11B: This item has been continued from the April 23rd, 2019 BCC Meeting. Recommendation to Advertise a Public Hearing to Consider the Adoption of a New Ordinance to be Called "The Pollution Control and Prevention Ordinance," Repealing and Replacing Ordinance #87-79 Regarding the Transportation and Disposal of Sludge, and Repealing Resolution #88-311 Regarding Fees for Sludge Transportation and Disposal Permits. 11C: Recommendation to Accept the Randall Boulevard and Oilwell Road Corridor Study, and Direct Staff to Pursue the Alternative 2, Project #60065. 11D: Recommendation to Direct Staff to Advertise and Bring Back for a Public Hearing, an Ordinance Amending the Land Development Code, relating to Commercial Landscaping Standards, at the June 25th, 2019 Board Meeting. 11E: This item to be heard no sooner than 1:00 p.m. Recommendation to Direct the County Attorney to Advertise and Bring Back for a Public Hearing, an Ordinance to be Known as "The Collier County Property-Assessed Clean Energy Consumer Protection Ordinance." 11F: This item to be heard at 10:45 a.m. Recommendation to Accept the After-Action Report for the 2019 Florida Legislative Session, and Provide Guidance of Preliminary Planning Begins for the Next Legislative Session. Item 12: County Attorney's Report. Item 13: Other Constitutional Officers. Item 14: Airport Authority and/or Community Redevelopment Agency. 14A: Airport Authority. 14A1: Recommendation to Approve an Agreement pertaining to the Award of Invitation to Bid #18-7366, Marco Airport Apron and Associated Safety Improvements to the Quality Enterprises USA Inc., in the Amount of $3,689,425, and authorize the Chairman to Execute the Attached Construction Agreement. Item 15: Staff and Commission General Communications. 15A: Proposed Future Workshop Schedule. Item 16: Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine, and action will be taken by one motion without separate discussion of each item. If discussion is desired by a member of the Board, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For more information on consent agenda items, call 252-8586.
Item 17. Summary Agenda. This section is for advertised public hearings and must meet the following criteria: 1. A recommendation for approval from staff; 2. A unanimous recommendation for approval by the Collier County Planning Commission or other authorizing agencies of all members present and voting; 3. No written or oral objections to the item received by staff, the Planning Commission, or other authorizing agencies, or the Board prior to the commencement of the BCC meeting on which the items are scheduled to be heard; and 4. No individuals are registered to speak in opposition to the item. For those items which are quasi-judicial in nature, all participants must be sworn in. For more information on Summary Agenda Items, call 252-8586.